But she's from here. She's there. So, yeah, so she's up one base and these are the other. They're together. So, it worked out very well for her.
And the house back here?
No, they have a house up there. Yeah, they had me come here and they added up to you, you know. And she said, you know what? We're just gonna do it. And if we transfer in four years, we'll keep your son or daughter. Um, they can keep it as a rental. Because I mean, there's a lot of military right there.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a single room right now, three bedrooms. So it's nice.
So it's reasonable.
But the 10 minutes of the base, so very convenient for anybody who's, you know, hopping around.
That's good.
So, I think that's what he's gonna do is, um, because they have, she's Air Force, they have to pick a base that, um, is very trade for money. They have dual bases.
Okay.
They have a couple of choices in the next couple of years. It's on the side of their home.
Something.
Yeah, they're doing, she just got promoted. She has another girl. Yeah.
Yeah. You worry about when you're living, you worry about.
Yeah.
It's sad to be very worried about for.
For 22, I was on call.
Don't come out. They're on the shoulders. And you're on the hot rack too. Sure you call them first thing in the morning.
Does he have a job?
Yes, I do have a job.
Thank you. Putting your hours on. Take care of your home. When you do, yeah. Yeah. I want, uh, I want you to ask me to talk more.
The new job is not a different name?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, from November I should be doing.
Yeah, I should be doing that. Tough.
Yeah, I'll post it over.
Now I see you work.
Okay. I don't know, does she actually have a contact? What school do they close?
No, my toddler opened.
Of course she, yeah, she has mental bar breaks through the day.
Yes. It's like six.
I know, all of a sudden I was like, oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't think I actually would be doing things at times.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. It's 7 o'clock. As you know, we're starting a half hour early, which is nice. Thank you. Uh, this is for the agenda meeting of the Marshville Borough Council, May 8th, 2018. If you'll all please rise for a moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance will begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay. Oh, thanks. Okay, and if we could have a roll call, please, Virginia?
Here.
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 Our manager. Okay, all right, thank you. Guess we'll do the, um, on the, the presentation, she wanted to just talk about this first, what's gonna be coming up, and then I'll go to the public comment.
Sure, yes, because there is gonna be a change. Um, if you look at your draft agenda, we actually will have a presentation from PSAB, will be 4A, and the public hearing on the Giant Food Stores application will go to 4B, and the auditing firm to 4C.
Okay. Is there, just the presentation from PSAB is just, um, basics?
Oh, actually, I'll defer to council and the Chronicle. It involves our junior councilperson.
Yes, this is just a presentation, oh, sorry. This is just a presentation from Edward Child, giving the acknowledgement to our, this year's junior councilperson.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one would be, which everyone got in their packet, is the transfer of the liquor licensing for the Giant Food Stores. Um, I believe that's the one on Trent Nav.
Yes.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Everyone get that information? Anyone have any questions about that?
I do.
See, okay.
So, are they?
Put your microphone down a little bit.
Are they obtaining a liquor license, or?
Yes, they're obtaining, uh, liquor license from a neighboring municipality, and they're transferring it into Marshville Borough.
That means our Giant will be selling liquor.
Most of them are now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have like, um, usually it's a sectioned off garden type of area where they have their own staff in there that checks all ID, no matter who you are coming in there. They don't care if you're 90 and on a walker. You have to show that ID.
Okay.
Okay, um, the next one would be from the auditing firm, Barkane Thornton and Company. This is for the, um, DCD one, or which audit is it?
Yes.
Is that the DCD?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, and after that, then, I'll open up the public comment, and if I could remind everyone that, um, it's a three-minute time limit, please. And, um, our assistant borough secretary, Virginia, will give you a heads-up when it's at one minute. So, anyone sign up to, to speak?
I didn't, but.
Oh, okay.
Just looking at the agenda.
Just give your name and address.
Sure, Jane Berger, 90, West Maple Avenue. Good evening, everyone. Um, on the transfer of the liquor license coming in, is this being done under what they call economic development? It's not tied to any particular number of licenses and other types of establishments? We don't know. It's okay to come in? I guess is what I'm asking, because you're doing it?
Yes. It's routinely done, yeah.
Okay. Um, I know we had one in the shopping center years ago, and it kind of disappeared and went up into a part of the, uh, shopping center on the other side of Plaza Boulevard, and that's a full-service liquor store, so I guess that's gonna be there, but I'm trying to think where the line is, if that's in Falls Township or the Marshville part of that shopping center. I think that might be in Falls Township.
Where the Giant is?
Yeah, not the Giant, across. Where the State Store is, yeah. Because.
That's false.
It's false, it's in the second building, because the first building is Marshville, and that one's in Falls. Okay, it's a different township, so that's fine. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, then we'll, I'm sorry, close public comment at this time. Okay, and we'll move on to, uh, we'll of course go into the minutes. Everyone receive these minutes of March 13th. If you have any questions about them, um, please make sure you get back to the administration to have it corrected.
Mm-hmm.
I thought that council agreed that the minutes would be a synopsis.
We did. We were, the minutes were already, you know.
Before the vote came.
Three-quarters of the way through in verbatim form, so we weren't gonna change them at that point.
Right, this is the last one.
But that's the last, uh, meeting, you'll see verbatim minutes. There're gonna be summary minutes after that.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, someone else asked that, too. I looked up and said 60 pages, wow, that's gonna take a lot of reading.
60.
Yeah, 60 pages, yes.
60 pages.
So, yeah, we won't be doing that anymore. Um, yeah, but if there's any questions about any of those minutes, please get back to the administration before the regular council meeting. Uh, the next one would be the finance, which would be our bills, which you'll receive, um, it's, it's two weeks, right, before the next, it's actually a two-week span this time, yeah.
It's an odd month. We've not, we won't be meeting until the 21st, yes.
Right, okay, well, you'll be getting those min, I had managed, those two, but you'll be getting the bills ahead of time, so please look at them. Staff is more than willing and helpful to get, answer any questions you have ahead of time to make that run a little bit smoother, so please do.
If I could interrupt?
Sure.
Um, and, uh, Mr. Mitchell, I'm sure it's because of the time lag as well, but usually by now we get a copy of, um, the financial impact of Keystone, um, so I assume that we'll have that before this next meeting as well.
You will.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I could say it'll take a little bit, because you've got that two-week weird, there's a couple of months it does that during the, during the year.
Today's only the 8th, you know.
Yeah. Moving things along.
I'm as impatient as you are, sir.
Okay, um, the mayor's not here, but I'm sure he will have a, a report. Um, I will mention, though, during this period of time, that we received a, um, memo from the mayor, and he would like to have added onto the agenda a hire for two part-time officers. Um, we had two officers, um, that had left, one got a, a job in another municipality, we wish him the best, and, um, and then another officer to replace, he has two part-timers down now, so, uh, one of the names is David Ramis, and the other one would be Matthew Allen. Uh, so, does, I'll bring that up for the council, does council have any?
Yeah, we should put it on.
We'll put it on, we're okay with that, everyone? Okay. Um, where do you want to add that on to?
Uh, we'll add that as 9K under action items. I'd like to get to Z, but Virginia won't let me.
Okay. Okay, the junior councilperson report. Next one, then, action items, I'll just go over each one of them individually, I don't have to read the whole thing, but I will go over them individually. Uh, 9A would be the motion, according to our budget, uh, we give the fire department, um, their allowance several times a year, so this would be coming up, the, the number will be inserted at the time you get that last agenda. Anyone have any, uh, this is standard, so I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments about that. Okay. The next one would be 9B, same thing, it's for the rescue squad. Uh, we did give them $30,000 ahead of time out of the allotment that's given to them, usually in May, uh, so now this would be the remainder, correct, Scott?
I do have a question about that.
Sure.
Um, just as a follow-up, um, we, we prepaid a little bit, um, did we receive a copy of the financials?
We've received a lot of their information, including financial information. In fact, uh, we meet with them weekly.
Okay.
Um, that situation is progressing. We feel we have four possible suitors for either a takeover or consolidation.
Okay.
Um, uh, you know, we'll see which one or which ones work out. I do not yet have what I'm comfortable with, with calling a, a 2017 financial statement, but we've got, anything we've requested, that they've provided.
Understood, thank you.
It's just a matter of getting their professional year-end, you know, 2017 financial statement done.
Now, the amount for them is usually around $52,000, something like that? Am I correct, somewhere in there?
I think it was around 56.
Oh, 56, okay.
For the June 1st.
56, okay. Okay, so we'll know about, okay, all right, just so we know what that amount will be. Okay.
Yeah, it'll be around 24 to 27,000, something like that.
Cool.
Well, hopefully everyone's working very hard and can figure out a way to, uh, to save this and be able to keep it in town. I know we all would like that.
Well, they actually did a hurried, uh, fund drive. You may have seen it in your mail.
Mm-hmm.
And as of our last meeting with them, I think they've brought in about $8,000 in community donations, so that was good.
And the community stepping up, they really want that to be there, and we all do. Okay, 9C is, is the standard also. This is the motion for the cosponsorship for the Memorial Day Parade, is also, we give the fire company $1,800 out of the budget for the cost on their end for the parade. Um, I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments. We have, if you're new on council, but I think everyone knows we do this every year. Is there any, anyone needs anything? We're good?
Actually, you budgeted for this item, so.
Right, we do. Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, the next one is 9D, is a motion to approve the mayor's Labor Day picnic held in Williamson Park on Monday, 9/3/18, or the rain date would be Saturday, 9/8/18.
You can disregard the question marks. These dates have been confirmed with the mayor's office, so.
Okay.
They're set if acceptable to you.
Mm-hmm. Any questions or comments on this motion, anyone? Nope, okay. Next one is, um, 9E would be approval of the 27 audit report, so once we get that, you do have to actually, uh, confirm that we're approving that. 9F is a.
I just have a quick question on that.
Sure, I'm sorry.
Are we gonna get this audit report ahead of time, or are we just gonna approve it based on the presentation they give?
Uh, we're gonna ask the audit firm to provide us the report in advance of the presentation.
Do they give like an analysis type of breakdown?
You might just get the executive summary ahead of the presentation, but we'll, we'll have something in your packets.
Okay.
Anyone else on that? No? Okay. 9F is, uh, we have a five-year contract with Republic Service for our trash pickup. We're at the three-year mark, so the last two years, um, has to be voted by council to continue with the last additional two years. Um, any questions, comments, anyone has on that?
Justin, you wanna go first?
You can, Mike.
Okay.
If I, uh, I, I might could beat you to the punch, Madam President, because I'm actually gonna, um, request council's okay to pull this from the agenda at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good there.
All right.
Okay.
I have a meeting with Republic Services tomorrow, so I would.
Okay.
Like to put this on the agenda for June or July at the latest.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, I think a little conversation with them might help. Okay, so we'll, we're gonna move all these numbers then up after that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this would be 9F. 9G. 9H. Hi, now you're confusing me. Okay, 9F will then be, uh, the motion to approve the Portnoy law associated to start collecting the delinquent real estate taxes effective as of January 1st, 2019. Um, you all got the information for that in your packets, very basic, um, contract, similar to the one they did for the, uh, trash collection. Um, any questions, comments, anyone has on that?
I do. So, uh, Mr. Mitchell, was there any, um, estimate on volume that's gonna be sent, and have they provided us any feedback, or have we asked them for any feedback on what the anticipated returns would be?
I believe when Jason was here a few months back, they did provide us with some of that information.
Okay.
I, I think it was in your packets.
A double check.
We've received nothing new, other than the, uh, actual contract, which we circulated to you.
Yep.
Although I do think there was, um, another informational piece on there, may have been about, uh, the same service they're currently providing to the school district.
Yep.
Yes, they are.
But no, and, uh, actually, the administration is neutral on this point as to whether we continue to have the county, uh, do our collections, or, uh, have Portnoy do it, so.
I just had a quick question about this. I know that we had used Portnoy for the trash collection because there was significant backlog with that, but I believe our real estate taxes are pretty much, I mean, they're in the 90% area. Do, is that correct? Am I wrong in that thinking? So.
Yeah, you're correct.
I mean, it just, this seems a little bit unnecessary, like an unnecessary expense to me.
Well, actually, you're saving a little bit of money by using Portnoy, because unlike the county, they roll the cost of collections into.
To the resident, though. So.
And again, there's no pressure to make a decision on this now. In fact, you could, uh, if you wanted, you could wait until closer to the fourth quarter. We just put it on because they asked us where we stood from the last presentation. So it's really there for discussion.
Okay. How does everyone feel about that? Is this something you want to do at this time? Uh, should we take consensus on whether it should wait a little bit? You have time to think about it?
Well, I think that, like I said, for Portnoy to take over our garbage, I think that was a good idea, because we were so, that was such a backlog, but because of our real estate taxes being really, like I said, I think it's in the high 90s.
I believe so, yeah.
I don't know that to push forward this, at this time, would be a great idea.
This is for the delinquent real estate taxes.
Correct.
How, how far back will Portnoy go for the taxes?
Actually, I don't think they would go backwards. I think it would be point forward.
Okay.
They'd be collecting, so it would be effective with.
Right.
January 1.
2019.
Okay.
Oh, so we're not gonna be placing with them what's currently passed due?
No.
Got it. Okay, yeah, I, I don't feel the need to have this on here right now.
Okay, all right, would you, would we like to pull that off of there, then? And we'll think about that for future time?
If you'd like, we'll remind you again, uh, maybe around the end of the summer, and see if you feel different, and if not, it doesn't, you know, it could be a 2019 decision if you wish to make a change.
Is that good? We'll wait till the end of summer and bring it back up?
Fine with that.
We can discuss it at that point?
Nobody else is.
Okay, all right, we'll remove this.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Can we get a figure of how much dollar value for, goes uncollected?
I believe that was in their presentation when they were here a couple of months ago, was pretty detailed. It was in your packets.
I don't recall seeing, and again, I think what he's asking for is the same thing I'm asking for, how much would we be placing with them? And I'm hearing high 90s, um, but for me, I don't know what that number would be.
No, no, I believe what you're hearing about high 90s is our current collection rate is in the high 90s.
Correct. So, so my, my question is, what's that volume, um, how many accounts, and, and what's the, um, the, uh, unpaid balance of all those accounts that we'd be placing, um, on average going forward? I thought we were somewhere around 94, 95% that we were collecting.
That's pretty high, yeah.
I, I just, in, I don't, I, I'll, I'll figure it out. I could, I could actually figure that out by looking at the budget.
Okay, well, if you, if you need something more, let us know.
All right, we're gonna be moving these, uh, letters around a little bit, then. Uh, that would make the next one, 9F, which would be the actual vote for the adoption of the liquor license for the transfer to, uh, to Giant Stores. Um, everyone got that? I think we just went over that. I don't think there's anything else correct with that. Uh, next one then would be 9G. Uh, motion to cancel the June 12th, 2018 special agenda meeting of the council due to the PSAB annual conference that falls during that same period of time. Um, I think there's, I think everybody understands that, so that's pretty much cut and dry. Um, so 9I will be to, uh, a higher, a point higher, higher would be.
Well, actually, there, there would be a, there's a last-minute addition. The borough engineer is going to be providing us with a change order number two for the MR Rider School Demolition Project, and he's asking for us to, uh, approve that at the next meeting, so that would be the next item.
We'll see.
And the hiring of the two police officers would be after that.
Okay, so do them last, then. So 9H would be the change order for the engineer.
Yep, don't panic about change order number two. Basically, uh, in short, what happened was the, the borough bid the contract like three years ago, before there was even any money to fund it.
Right.
Grants subsequently fell into place for the funding. Some of the terms and conditions of those grants require, um, additional insured language. No one ever went back to the demo contract to amend the language to reflect that. There's a $500 cost to the contractor associated with doing that, but we also have some credits coming due to us from the contractor for, uh, some work that proved to not be necessary. So at the end of the day, the net, uh, difference is still gonna be positive, favorable to the borough, uh, by a couple thousand dollars, so.
Okay.
You're saying the project is coming in under budget?
On time and under budget.
I don't know how to.
All right.
I don't know how to take that.
I, I will say at this time, too, I was just down there, uh, Summer Street, painting the, uh, sign in front of the building, and had the opportunity to be there for quite a bit of time, for two days, and watch premium down there working, and I have to tell you, they are doing a fantastic job down there. Very respectful of the residents in the area. Um, they're, they do everything they can to just be as clean as possible when they're doing it, and the way they're actually grading that property and stuff, everyone is really impressed. We've had people, when I was down there, just stop by, just to look at it and see what they were doing, so quality work that they're doing down there, so I, you know, I thank them for that.
And we would like to get them paid, and the, the state.
Yes.
The state is holding up, uh, their share of the funding because of this additional insured language, so we're looking to get that ironed out expeditiously.
Okay, that would be great. Okay, so I think that takes the care of everything on the, um, action items. Let me see, I got scribbled all over the place here.
Can I ask you possibly a stupid question?
Sure.
Um, we received a letter and a resolution regarding, um, this one East Philadelphia Avenue. Is this connected with Giant, or is this, this is separate?
It's completely separate.
Okay, good.
And I, I was gonna speak to that before we.
Okay.
Before we adjourn.
Okay, do you want to do that first, and then I'm gonna mention about the, oh, yeah, you do that first, and then I'll add one.
Okay, I actually have two things. First is, I don't know if you recall from the Winterfest Parade in December, little Ms. Winterfest, I believe she was crowned by the mayor.
Right.
Gianna Lynch of Morrisville, uh, has recently been informed that she's going to compete in the 2018 Miss Pennsylvania Junior Pre-Teen Pageant in August.
Ah, very nice.
So she's actually in the process of raising the funds in order to compete in that in August in Harrisburg. So congratulations to her, that's great news.
Yes, that's wonderful. Wonderful.
And the item you were referring to, the FOE, uh, this is not, uh, ready to go for the May meeting, it will probably come back to you in June. Um, basically, the applicant already holds a liquor license in another jurisdiction, is looking to transfer it here to Morrisville Borough. Uh, they're going to be opening an establishment at South Pennsylvania Avenue and Philadelphia Avenue. Uh, it used to be a club, I can't remember.
City Limits.
City Limits.
City Limits.
Uh, so they're gonna be operating out of there. Uh, the solicitor and I, uh, have been in touch with the parties involved. Uh, they're going to, um, unfortunately not make your May 21 meeting because of the advertising requirement, uh, of the resolution, so this will probably be docketed for your, uh, June meeting.
Okay.
But we wanted to give you a heads-up now, so you know what's going on, in case you hear about it elsewhere.
It'd be nice for that building to be put, uh, put in use again.
Can we get anything on that, on their, I guess their hours of operation? Just so the public will know.
This is a private club, though, correct?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Uh, as I understand it, it will be open to the public one day a week.
Okay.
But again, other than what you have in front of you, we've not seen, uh, any other information.
So we'll get more before that actually transpires?
Yes.
Okay.
And it'll have to be advertised. There will be a public hearing, just, you know, similar to the process you're seeing us go through with Giant.
Okay. All right, um, something I also would like to add, um, to the agenda, so I guess, uh, Something I also would like to add to the agenda, so I guess 9I, should we keep going to get to the end of the alphabet? We're working on it. Working on it. So, it'd be 9, I guess 9J? If I mess up these letters, just let me know. We've moved them around a couple of times. We've had four people send in their letters of interest for the Recreation Advisory Board.
Actually, I had another one just today.
Oh, okay, so then there's five. Okay. There's seven positions actually for that. Councilwoman Lani Driesbach is liaison for the council already. So, so we can get that up and rolling, and get their meetings advertised, because they would now have enough of a quorum to hold those meetings. I would like to be able to put those names up and appoint them at this, this coming meeting in May, if the council's okay with that. If anyone did not get all of the applications, applications, letter of interest, please let the borough know, because we had the packet this week, got a little messed up, if someone didn't get one of them. So, you have the opportunity. There's email addresses on there. Please give them a call, or stop and see them. If you want, I can, I know the fifth person, if you know the name of that fifth, fifth, fifth person. But there was Kyle Bruat, Holly Harmon, Noel Sperry, and Amy Marie Rinkovich, so far have applied with their letters of interest. So, and whoever that fifth person would be.
For clarity, there was also one more, but he, he reached out to me, and he's moving.
Oh, okay.
That would be Greg DeLaylo. So, he, he wanted to withdraw his request.
Oh, that's a shame, because I know he was with Recreation over in Jersey at one time.
At Rutgers, Rutgers University.
Oh, that's a shame. I wish him well when he, when he moves. He's a nice family. So, if it's, okay, with the council, I'd like to put that on the agenda to have those actually appointed.
So, there'll still be two more positions opened?
Yes, yes.
Seven total, yeah.
Seven total.
Let me make sure that doesn't, if that includes Eileen. Check that. Doesn't. Okay, seven and then Eileen.
Okay.
So, two of them. But they can at least meet, because they go to quorum, and they can always add the other two people, but they have enough to do quorum at this point.
Okay, and then would they then receive the-
Bylaws?
Right, the bylaws that go with that?
Yes, I'll make sure.
So, this way, once they start their meetings, everyone is ready to go?
Because that is resident-based, they select their own president, vice president, secretary, like any board would do. And so, when they meet, they can do that. But everyone that gets appointed on will get a copy of those bylaws, so that everyone knows what, what is expected of the board. Okay. I guess that's it for anything. Does anybody else have anything to add? Because we got more letters in the alphabet. If you want anything more to give Virginia to put on there. Anyone else? No, we're good? Okay, then I guess we'll go to the borough officials. Is there anything anyone would like to bring up, or they'd like to discuss at this point?
I would, yes. I heard from the commissioners regarding the benches
Okay.
at the senior center.
Okay.
And they, I have in writing that they are 100% behind the project.
Oh, great.
And they will do whatever they can do on their end to help us get it going.
Okay, and this is under beautification?
Doing a fundraiser, if we need to, with the senior center, so. He actually, I miss, I'm sorry. Should have had it out. I'll make sure everybody gets a copy of it.
Did he send you through an email, correct?
Yeah, he did. I'm sorry.
Send that over.
It's from their general counsel.
Okay.
He reached out to me. And he-
This is Commissioner Rob?
The 100% behind it, anything that we needed.
Very nice.
And then, obviously, if we did a fundraiser, the commissioners would, you know, be more than happy to.
We have an about cost from the one at the library, so we know what one of those benches cost, if it's very similar to that. And the pavers, you want to have it actually installed properly.
And they also said that they would like to help with the install.
Oh, very nice.
Yes.
Oh, very nice. That would be wonderful.
You have our permission, and we can also help with the install.
Oh, thank you. That's, thank you very much, Danielle, for getting, getting on that. We've been trying to get that moving along. It's, it would really be nice down there for the center.
So, I just wanted to let everybody know.
Okay, very nice. We'll work on that. Gets to the next beautification meeting. We'll bring that up. Also, Danielle, while you were speaking, under beautification, when you had the meeting, we had a Tim Gibson come out from the 10,000 Flowers Project. Would you like to elaborate on what that was about, in case someone didn't catch that meeting?
The 10,000 Flowers Project is, they're, they're painting murals, but it's flowers. Everyone received that in their packet? Did everyone get that?
I believe so.
Okay. And what he would like to propose to do is do the flower murals on the old Tony Goes down at Williamson Park. So, around that building-
The snack shop, or snack shack?
Snack Shack, yes.
So, if you don't know what Tony Goes is.
Sorry, the snack shack, by where the pool used to be. He would like to do, it would be basically a paint-by-numbers. So, it would be stenciled out, and then the community could get together and-
Volunteers, yeah.
Paint, volunteers paint the flowers themselves. So, what we would like to do is, obviously, he would need funding, so there would need to be a fundraiser, so I'd like to, Pete Eisenberg from the Artists of Morrisville was at our meeting. And maybe, I would like to have Tim and Pete meet together, so that he could do the fundraiser through the Artists of Morrisville.
Okay.
But what we were discussing was also incorporating the stage area, the base area of the stage.
Correct.
So, the bottom of that, of the stage area would also have the flowers on them. So, once you come into Williamson Park, that building would have these beautiful flowers that were painted by the community, and it would incorporate along with the stage.
Yeah, a lot-
But he's doing it across the country. So, he started in Percasie, and everyone received the Percasie, what it looks like there.
Their parking lot walls, where they had a big parking lot retaining wall.
It's not, it's not anything gaudy. It's very nicely done. But Percasie is where he started, and he's working to do, I believe he said Doylestown.
Yes.
And he would like to bring it here to Morrisville, and basically, what he's going to do is go from-
Right, he's trying to get three other municipalities for this summer program. So, it would be Percasie, who'd be us, and then two other municipalities. Doylestown's also looking into it. The pictures that we had seen of the paintings was kind of cute, because if the totlot equipment ends up being somewhere in that vicinity, it would fit perfect, the little type of flower drawings they had. And the way he explained it was, the connection between 10,000 flowers across the states was that at the end of the mural, for whatever town it is, one flower on the very end of the project will only be half of a flower. The next town that picks up, picks up your flower, and then connects it from there. So, that's, that's how that connection comes in, is the way he explained that.
So, it's a nice project. I think it would fit perfectly down at the park?
Yeah, so at this point, I think it's, he still has to get all his ducks in a row, as far as his flyers and stuff. We told him to bring the stuff to the administration at the borough, so that we can get a little more on it, and see where we can help him along with that, as far as maybe the business is also getting those memos, and see where we can get donations. I think he said he's looking to probably collect about 3,000. It's going to cost that amount of paint and sealer.
It's going to cost about $3,000, because what'll happen is, once the flowers are painted, they will have a sealant on them.
For graffiti, yeah.
For graffiti. And if someone graffitis it, is all you do is take a hose to it, and it comes right off. So, there's no need to scrub or anything like that.
I don't think any of this has been put up on like the website, because we don't have enough about it yet. It was just brought to the beautification committee, so we're just putting it out there as we get more information about it. We'll give it to the administration. They'll also make sure they get it over there, and we can get it out to everyone at a point that looks like it's going to actually take off and start moving. But we thought we'd bring that up. I, I have one thing, and then if anybody else wants to mention. I had mentioned to Scott and the attorney about the LED sign things, and I don't know whether anyone has contemplated it, but we, in our sign ordinance, we really don't allow the LED lights, the moving lights. The one down the street, the small one, the Jules House, has been grandfathered in from years ago. It's a small one, very tastefully done in the business, in the business area. But it might not be something too bad to think about on the council's end somewhere down the road, if we'd want to amend the ordinance, if we decided to actually put one up somewhere for ourselves. There's one, I was talking to Scott, done by the Rotary up in Langhorne, just as you get onto, it would be Flowers Mill Road, right there. Tastefully done. It's in an area that's where you're going to catch a lot of traffic in your commercial. And it, what it scrolls across is events from the town, which was very nice. And if we picked an area, let's say, it would definitely have to be in your C1, which is your service, service area, service district. ECS1, sorry. And then, and then you can, you can control that by the council. It would be a conditional use for that, if you decide to do that. But you could put it maybe down by your bridge, where you'd be coming across for your park area, or maybe somewhere down near Toll Brothers, or where you would catch it off of US1. It'd be great if you were having a Labor Day picnic, and it's advertising across. You're having any kind of an event in town, that's where you would advertise that. Scott was saying that the Rotary, they are expensive. The Rotary collect the funds and actually put that in up there. But they actually get a revenue from it also, because anyone that advertises on that sign pays who owns that sign. So, I'm not saying we have to do it. I'm just going to toss it out there. It's probably not something bad to look into that might help the businesses, as well as the town, when you're starting to do some of these events. So, I'm just going to toss an idea out there about it, think about it. The school is looking to do an LED sign. It would have to go before zoning, because the fact it is not in that zoning area. This would also include them, then, if this was a change that we did, and it would be conditionally used. The council will control that. Might make it a little bit easier on those things. And the reason you want it to be controlled by the council, so they don't just pop up anywhere in somebody's window downtown, where they've got big flashing, competing, you know, LED lights going across their windows. So, it either, like I said, you definitely have to have it through zoning, definitely have to have it through the council's control. But it's not something I think would be a bad idea to look into for us down the road. So, is there anything else anyone else wants to discuss, bring up?
I just have one quick announcement.
Sure.
Friends of Morrisville Dog Park will be having their cocktail party at Summer Seat on May 19th, from 6:00 to 9:00. Tickets are $75. You can reach out through their website if you need a ticket.
Anyone else? And that's a fun party. I wouldn't miss it, telling you. They put on quite a classy show. Great food, too.
I have a question for Councilman Jaeger. I know he's on our Blighted Properties Committee. Do we currently have any blighted prop, blight medication strategy or plan in place for the borough?
We do not, that I'm aware of, at least. It hasn't gone through the, that committee yet. That committee was scheduled to meet on a day that we got blasted with snow. The, there is a meeting date coming up. I don't know offhand, but I'll get back to you. I'll tell you. I'll let you know when it is. And we have to get the, all the, all the people in place for that meeting, and we'll look at it at that point. I don't have anything that tells me we do, though.
Okay, and I've been looking at some other communities. I mean, we don't have to come up with our own from scratch. You know, I think we could adapt one and kind of tweak it to our own needs. The reason I mentioned it, over the weekend, I was out in my neighborhood in 50 Union Street here. That property has been in bad shape for a long, long time. Animals living underneath. From what the neighbors tell me, there's no plumbing inside the property, so it's not even inhabitable. You know, it'd be nice to have a strategy where we can set out, you know, step by step.
So, so there is a process, and that would be through code enforcement.
Right.
And I can tell you, for that specific property, again, I don't know that the Blighted Properties Committee has anything to this effect, but the borough does, right? So, there, there is an escalating process that's taken through Keystone. And I can tell you, it's, that property specifically, it's come up many, many times over the years that I even know of. And I, I'll look into it, and maybe Scott could even give us some feedback on it, if he knows anything specific lately. But I do know there has been many conversations with the owner on that property, and it hasn't been moving very quickly.
Okay. Yeah, the two properties you brought to my attention, I did discuss with code enforcement. They're well aware of the situation. And we're going to go through the process of starting to document our case.
I know, it's not a, it's not a quick process.
No.
No. And you do have to have that documentation in order to proceed.
And it shouldn't be a quick process. It should be something that we allow the process to take place, and give everybody every opportunity to fix the situation.
Okay, thank you.
Any, speaking of that, is there any, is there a set meeting set up for the Blighted Properties, as far as we're concerned?
I don't recall the exact date offhand, but there is, there is a scheduled meeting. It's scheduled quarterly.
Okay.
So, there is a meeting scheduled. I will get back to you with the, the date.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else, any other announcements, anything you'd like to say? Okay, then I think our meeting is ready to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so that was moved by Ms. Driesbach, I have Ms. Driesbach. Ms. Larson, and second by Mr. Jaeger. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Aye.
Oh, I'm saying, yeah. All approved.
At 7:41.
Two.